Been there. Well, it's red. All right, we are live. Good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the February twenty first, uh, twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting. Uh, tonight is my last evening in my tenure as Deputy Mayor where I'm chairing these meetings. I have no speech planned. I was asked. There's no speech. It's that. That's it. So we'll start with, uh, looking for to adopt the agenda because I was getting a motion to do so. From somebody. All right.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, perfect. Uh, just a comment. It is a very, uh, long agenda this evening, so let's, uh, try and be efficient. There's, uh, three login camera items at the end of the evening, just to let everybody know. But, uh, yeah, any further questions, comments? Nope. Call the question. All in favor of the agenda? Carried. And next up, adoption of the minutes. Councilor Flowers.
I move to adopt the minutes of the last committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, comment? Call the question. All in favor? Carried. And I will just add before we get into things that Councilor Reed is away, uh, this week. He wasn't able to join us. Okay, so, uh, there's no delegations this evening. So we'll move right into business. Item five A, uh, we are having a presentation on the Unity University District, uh, update. Uh, Mr. Henman.
Uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor Nagel and, uh, members of council. Just wanted to, uh, introduce, uh, Mr. Travis Olberg. He is the Senior Development Manager with the University of Calgary's Properties Group, uh, and that is the developers of the University District. We had a presentation by Mr. Olberg earlier this year. Uh, it was very impressive. There's lots of great, uh, features that we thought would be valuable for council to learn about and have an opportunity to learn about a new and innovative development, uh, just to the east of us. So we invited, uh, Mr. Olberg, uh, back here today to, uh, share his presentation with you, an abbreviated version, uh, and, uh, and perhaps answer some questions if you had any. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Olberg and, uh, we can go from there.
Good evening. Uh, first off, I wanted to say thank you very much to the mayor, council, administration for having me. Um, every time I get an opportunity to talk about University District, I'm very proud of it, so I'd like to talk and do lessons learned. Again, my name is Travis Olberg and I ran a lot of the planning and, uh, development initiatives through for University District. So at first I thought I'd talk about the opportunity and why University District came about. And it was really around, um, the University of Calgary, looking at some endowment, excess endowment land around what was formerly called the West Campus around the Children's Hospital. First off, the university looked at what could this lands be? Do they need it for university use? Do they need it for student residence use? And from a study, they realized they don't need it. They have existing land on the, uh, university campus that can accommodate those. So then they looked at what this could actually be. And they knew that they had, uh, high demand for wanting to get professors, international professors, international students. And one of the things was, how do they actually create more of an urban forum, a village that centered around that also would create a hub for the surrounding communities, which they're also hearing that the university could be that hub of where people gather. So one of the first things that we did was establish some principles. And the prin- principles was, one of the ones that I just referenced was community as a destination. We were hearing from not only the university community, but around the surrounding communities of how this land could be the actual hub, a little bit of a downtown urban village for those surrounding residents. Environmental and sustainable, uh, was something that we were looking at. Again, university community built on relationships. That was really important to go out to stakeholders, find out what they were thinking, find out what the issues were, find out what's working well. It also worked as a little bit of market research for us as developers to find out, you know, what are some things people are interested in in Northwest Calgary. A unique and diverse and healthy that, you know, we're surrounded by two hospitals, walkability, uh, and making sure that we had a lot of mixed use to make sure that we can attract different, uh, people from all different walks of lives and also dynamic and connected. And that was largely tied to the transit network and how people moved in and out of the community. So ultimately, the vision was to create a mixed-use district that was vibrant. Um, how it can be changing over time, so flexibility, adaptability, you know, this was not going to be a short-term development. It was going to be developed over fifteen to twenty years. How can we take that flexibility and incorporate it into the, to the plan? And I'll speak to that a little bit going through here. So the process, as I said, we're surrounded by five established communities. So we are in an infilled location. We also have a major university and we have two hospitals, the Fodos Medical Center, the Alberta Children's Hospital, and also a regional mall. So in the city of Calgary, this is deemed a major activity center. So it's the highest diversity of use, the highest density outside of downtown, and it's largely driven because of these major institutions, but also has to be incorporated because we have these established communities around us. So some of the things that we did was, instead of going out and designing a plan and coming in and defending it, we went out to the stakeholders. We had some tours. We did workshops. We worked with the surrounding communities. We did open houses, find out what was actually going on. And that was an extensive process at the beginning, but it really helped us as we went through, um, our approvals through council. And what that did was, you know, we have over six hundred participants, again, walking tours. And one of the things I was most proud of is that, you know, day of council, uh, I'm not saying it came in early, but it came in a little bit late, but we actually had all five communities come together and sign one letter of support, saying that they felt that the process was fair. Did we agree on everything? No, but we, we laid out the groundwork early to make sure that we had the open dialogue between trade-offs between what we needed and what the community needed. And from that perspective, they felt that it was really fair. So, uh, that was something that I was really proud of, um, to get, uh, not only five separate letters, but to get the communities to come together and actually sign one to agree onto the process. So what that process led to is the key ingredients into the master plan. Some of the key ingredients was, you know, the transition in height between those established neighborhoods, but not only in height, but in density. How to take advantage of the transit and create a grid, grid network to make it easy to walk and move throughout the district. So that was something that was really important. We also had a north-south green spine where people were using the existing land, wanted to make sure that they can go for their walk and go through and still feel connected to their existing community. So those are some of the things that were the key ingredients. From that, um, we went and we have over nine million square feet of development. One point five million of that is office. Um, seventy-one hundred units of housing, fifteen thousand residents and jobs, and three hundred thousand square feet of retail. You could see on the plan, it's hard to see on the screen, but from north to south where those communities are, we have a transition in the yellow small squares of townhouses. Then it transitions into where you can see the orange boxes. That's more of a four-story multifamily product. And then as we get closer, because the communities were asking for the density to not necessarily be close to them, what it actually did was create its own little core. And inside the core, we have mixed use and we have a little bit higher of heights. So those neighborhoods get broken down. The north residential, what we call it, is, um, framed by our highest density to the south and the, uh, townhouse is transitioning to the north and is largely residential. Some of the key considerations and to show the adaptability and flexibility is that we are wondering how we would, uh, plan for a school. So in this situation, we worked with the CBE on something that was groundbreaking, um, was called an urban format school, where we had an agreement that we set aside a piece of land. What we would do is at a certain state of development, if we wanted to trigger that parcel, we would go to the CBE, see if there was a desire for a school. If there was a desire for a school, we would build it in a mixed-use building and lease it back to them. This saved the CBE the capital investment and, and allowed us to continue with development in a mixed-use, uh, area. If that site was not deemed needed for the school, it would defer to a second site. And then from there, if that site was not deemed, they would both revert to development sites, depending on what the capacity of the surrounding neighborhoods all had schools in them already. Our south residential, again, the transition largely townhouses in the four-story wood frame, um, towards the, uh, communities to the south. One of the things that we did was we created a bit of a flex zone, which we haven't had the opportunity to test out yet. But the idea is all the good urban villages that we had been to tour in Canadian cities, American cities, uh, and had done research on, they all had grown out of the ground very eclectically. So we wanted to understand, how do we take this new development approach and apply eclecticness to it, to the built form? And this zone was giving that, uh, opportunity for varying product types from, uh, townhouses to, uh, triplexes, fourplexes, whatever we could get in there to allow for that creation of more of, uh, what I'd call an eclectic form i- in the built form. Then we have our professional quarter and the professional quarter was really our office component. And the, the idea here was to wrap it around the hospital. Hospital's Children's Hospital is twenty-four hours a day. How do we provide that buffer to our residents? So the o- office was a good use to wrap around the hospital and also find complimentary services to the hospital. So our office would be looking to, how can they support, uh, the university or support to the, the Children's Hospital? Um, I don't have a special slide, but some special considerations. You're working around a hospital, so how did we handle, um, dust mitigation? How did we handle helicopters? Things like that were some special considerations that we had to take into the plan. One of the, the, uh, focal points or the heart of our community is actually our Central Park. It's called our Central Commons. This is a privately held park. It's the only park in the neighborhood that's privately held. All the other parks and commons parks were dedicated to the city as municipal reserve. We held this one back for our own purposes, just to program it. Um, we couldn't get onto the same page in regards to if it was an MR versus what we saw as a place-making initiative. So we've got a lot of special features that are in here, which we feel like, um, augment the retail experience. And one of the things we had to do on the, again, the flexibility and adaptability was when we were working through the Parks Department is how do we actually allow for permeability from our main street into this park space? But we didn't know what type of form. There was different forms of having a, a building as your terminus, a park as your terminus, a portion of that. So what we did is we built into the land use the flexibility to say, as long as there's twenty-five percent permeability into the park, the form can be established whatever way it, it happened. So we ended up going with the third option on the left, which is a plaza, which then ties into the image. And surprisingly, this is almost kind of what the, uh, what it looks like today. We have some fire features in the winter for warming with a skating rink. In the summer, we have some transitional space where we have water, um, and restaurant patios that back out into the park. So, uh, a really nice place. It's been very popular, well, um, over the winter months, especially with the skating rink, even to my surprise of how many people are going there and going for dinner. Great for date nights and things like that. So just off of our Central Commons Park is our main street. And this is really our retail street where we actually have a lot of activity, where we had a lot of key considerations, and I'll, and I'll speak to that in a moment. So one of those considerations was the actual cross-section. And we got into a lot of talks about, you know, the north side of the street allowing for patio spill-out space, but having it actually on a private easement so that it didn't have to go through, uh, rigorous approvals that the patios could spill out naturally. And at the same time allowing for, because this is adjacent to both of our high-density areas, but also mixed use, how do we keep the sidewalks wide enough for people to feel comfortable in walking by? So this combination between the streetscape, the patio spaces and pedestrians, what that mix was. And this is the only street that has this because this is kind of what we would call our special street, uh, of considerations. But one of the interesting things going through the approvals was working with the City Transportation and Road Department. So at one point, we're, how do we accommodate buses? How do we accommodate cycling? How do we accommodate all these different modes of transportation? And what we deemed is that we actually have different stages of life of the street. So the street doesn't have to be determined day one, what it ha- it's going to be in the end state. So we looked at, how can parking be introduced right away to support the retailers? But then gradually, if we had an issue with transportation around traffic or, or buses, that we can move to an off-peak scenario and then ultimately, um, wherever we landed, actually can be a truly shared street. And that flexibility would be, uh, going through these stages with various reports, so a study, a resident survey, a retail parking study, things like that, so that those things couldn't just be triggered on their own, but they'd be holistically triggered through the development. So again, our main street retail, uh, was one of our focuses. And one of the things we really wanted to do was have a, a strong pedestrian environment. So there is no access points for vehicles off the main street. They're all taken off of a back lane. Um, we also looked at, you know, how does this get staged? So in our stage one of our retail, we focused on what do people want in, uh, in a community on day one? And it largely came down to the typical things you think of a grocery store, a coffee shop, a liquor store, you know, some quick-service foods, some quick-service, um, fitness and things like that, which I think we've, we've actually achieved. And this was just an example to show that, you know, parking is an issue. Parking is, it drives a lot of things, but what we tried to do is again, on the main street, have no, have re- uh, street parking, but not any access points for parking, where we tucked it around the back, but at the same time, being on a lane, how could we actually incorporate some parallel or some angled parking? Maybe some surface parking at the back, but make sure that it's tucked away so that people still stand a chance. Like, a lot of people don't necessarily go straight to the underground parking until they're used to it. So if they're coming there for a quick pickup, whether they're going to the liquor store or to the grocery store or to the pet store, they have a spot to quickly stop, jump in, get what they need and head out. So another one of our focal points was around the enhanced urban realm. So when we are thinking about high-density areas and multifamily communities, we have no single-family homes. You don't have a backyard necessarily as your space to, for praise. So parks have to work a little bit harder. The urban realm has to be a higher quality and has to work a little bit harder. So the first thing we did was we tried to break down into principles, what are the things that we are trying to achieve through the actual urban realm and establish those. We established this with working with city administration and including their maintenance department. We looked at all different things from surfacing to crosswalks to stormwater, all these things, how they actually incorporate into the cross-section and where we would actually see some benefits. And one of the things that was really interesting is as we were going through these, we waited on, okay, where is its location and what's its actually, its need? And from that, we actually said, okay, well, we want to focus, no, everything can't be the same. Everything can't be great, but what, where do we really need it to be great? And that was really along that high-density, um, main street where we focused on, okay, these are the enhancements. This is where the sidewalk. This is where the materials need. This is where the placemaking is going to occur. So let's focus on that. And then everything else can be more of your traditional cross-sections. Um, and what we decided to go to is what a traditional cross-section in regards to, uh, concrete sidewalks and asphalt roads, but at the same time really highlight the intersections for the pedestrians so that they knew exactly that they were the priority versus the vehicle. Environmental stewardship, we're quite proud of this. It's, uh, we're LEED ND Platinum, one of three in Canada at the time to get this. We did not go in with the intention of getting LEED ND Platinum. We went in with the intention of developing a complete community. And as part of our own, uh, peace of mind, we wanted to go and see what type of certification. And we were very proud that once we, we, we did submit after the fact, that we did get the LEED ND certification of Platinum. So I'm just going to do a quick time check. I do have some development examples if I'm doing okay. Okay? So just, just really quickly to run through some of our examples, we have, um, the Ivy, which is one of our townhouse products done by Brookfield Residential, Noble, which was a combination. And then to the right, we have the Aria, which is actually where our Savon Foods is, and it's our mixed-use rental building. We actually have a hotel, um, which is under construction now, looking to open this spring, which is really interesting. Again, in a multifamily community, if you're, if you're downsizing, how do you have people come visit you? Well, if you have a hotel close by, it could be the best of both worlds. You don't necessarily have to entertain them all night, but you have them nice and close by in a, in a walkable neighborhood. Um, August was there. We also have, uh, Capella and, uh, Esquire, which are a combination of rentals. And then, uh, the, the two to the left here I wanted to highlight, we actually have a seniors component, which is the Brenda Stratford Cambridge Manor, which is assisted living, uh, and dementia, but it's also attached to the Maple through a plus-three system. And what that does is it allows for the ability for, uh, if you have two partners and one of them falls sick, they can be put into the assisted living, but at the same time, their partner can stay close by by buying a unit and actually getting à la carte services through the assisted living. So it's a really nice fit. It also ties into our demographic in the North West of Calgary because we have a lot of aging people that are looking to downsize or go into assisted living. So it's also brought a nice synergy between a mix of people, um, old and young between the universities, so. And again, this is the one I showed you earlier, which is our block twenty-three, which is actually, um, the University of Calgary Properties Group Development, which is mixed use again. And we have a movie theater in here, VIP movie theater, the, where the ice cream is actually turned out to be Village Ice Cream. So the plan has come to fruition very similar to how we envisioned it, so. And we have our, uh, Community Marketing Center, which we, we house all this information. We have the community story and we also have the developer story in there. So it's a good resource. Um, and again, I would invite anyone if they want to come out and visit, I'd be happy to tour them around and show them and explain some of the public realm. That's all I had. This is another rendering of what it exists at right now. And surprisingly, there was more people on the ice rink on the day we opened it than in this rendering, which I wouldn't have believed when we did it. And now I, I guess I'll turn it back over to see if anyone has any questions or they're interested to, um, ask me anything.
Okay, great. Thanks for your presentation. Um, questions? Councilor Fedeck.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I wanted to say, uh, number one, I love your idea of the Central Park. I love that you are bringing people inwards rather than necessarily flying by on the edge of a highway. Um, I think that's a really great idea of connecting communities. Um, I do have a couple of questions though for you. When, is there anything other than kind of, you, you, I'll touch a little bit on it about like assisted living, um, but what about aging and in place? And, and a lot of people, they don't necessarily want to look at moving into a condo or an apartment. Uh, what kind of other styles of housing that are affordable for people that are getting up there in age? You know, it's kind of like when they, they sell their house, the kids move out. They aren't ready for a condo. They don't want to live in a three-story townhouse. They're really looking for a bungalow type of style, having a little bit of their own yard, but, uh, is that something that you've made available to people in the community?
Yeah, the co- it's an interesting conversation. The Capella development from Brookfield, we're calling them stacked bungalows. So they do offer a larger floor, floor plate where we're seeing a lot of the downsizers who can't necessarily downsize as much as they want because they, they collected a lot of stuff over the years. But they're taking on, on units and moving into those, but they are on the more higher price side. Another thing that we're looking at doing is even, um, incorporating potentially a self-storage component. So having a site where people can actually, when they downsize, can put some of their things into storage, but have it close by to wa- to walk to. Other than that, the, we're looking at, how can our, some of our townhouse sites can potentially include more of a duplex bungalow in the future? So those are some of the ideas that we're, we're looking to and largely have the flexibility.
Yeah, it's the one thing that I hear of a lot of the time, a different hat though. Um, but it is, um, a lot of people are looking for a housing style that isn't necessarily a, a townhouse that they have to go into. They don't want to live in a, an apartment condo. They're not ready for that stage yet. And they become kind of lost in, and I think most communities that are out there because there's not a lot of housing options for them. So it is something that I've, I've constantly kind of looked at and I always kind of compare to, not necessarily, uh, a, a tiny home, but something along that idea where it's affordable. People have their own little bit of land or even common land that they can kind of look after together, but it's still their own space and they have like a, a little bungalow, but it's, it's affordable, right? It's, it's not five, six hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, affordability is definitely the, the issue on that. And we have looked at the potential of doing a seniors affordable housing component, but not necessarily in how you've described it.
Yeah. Um, and then the other question that I had, uh, when it came to your school sites, I, you know, I, I like this idea of looking at it where you have a school site, but if it's not going to be utilized or if it's never going to become a school, which I think most of us here in Cochrane would recognize that as something that we know a lot about. Um, what kind of timeline though is that where you decide where i- it becomes turned over into something else or that conversation starts to happen?
Yeah, we set out a, a memorandum of understanding with the CBE, which really targets units, so number of units. So we have seventy-one hundred, uh, units. Really, it's almost, uh, I think it's forty percent of the development, whatever that is, three thousand units. We each can trigger that and then the next one can be triggered at a certain amount of units. And they really have the option to say yes or no. The bigger conversation happens on the second site because when the second site is, once that's gone, it reverts to a development site. On the first site, um, we've already actually went to them and they've said they do not need it just because of the number of kids and the surrounding schools already, uh, take them into consideration. So to answer your question, it's triggered around number of units.
Perfect. Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Um, hmm, oh my gosh, I'm gonna, I forget my question now. Um, do you, when you, when you go to do development, do you develop your park, park space first? I mean, that's something that a lot of people here, we've always talked about is, is so many people, they see a new development or a new community coming on, but, you know, it's like the park is in phase five, right? Where I think a lot of people would feel a lot better about a development or anything, or, or a new community coming on board if it was, you know, if that was really our main focus, you know, pathways, parks, and then they see the residential component, but we seem to have it. Residential comes first, then it might be commercial, and then the park pathways.
Yeah, our strategy was to develop the park spaces in advance to, to show that the vision was coming to fruition and to demonstrate it. We also have existing facilities in around us that we also felt like we have a regional component and regional draw to start with our retail and also tying into the university and the hospital. So we, we thought we can capture that market by demonstrating that we are going to do some of those park spaces in advance. So our, our Northwest Commons, um, was one of our first parks and also our park network around our pond. We really tried to focus on at the same time as we were going through our first phases of development.
Perfect. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilor Wilson.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Travis. I, I had two questions, two things that, uh, generated interest in the presentation there. Um, one, when you said financially, you wanted to create a financially sound community, um, is, I, I constantly struggle myself with when, when we're doing planning with, uh, I, I like R-one zoning with big yards and, and white fences and like the traditional model that we saw in Cochrane. But, uh, I'm always weighing it against the financial realities of, um, R-one zoning often leading to an insolvent community long-term where, um, if you have a lack of density, it's usually a financial, uh, bad decision on, on your community long-term. Was that something that you were thinking of in, in your area here? Was it, were you just simply limited to space and that's why you went for higher density development?
Uh, no, I, well, it's partly because we're an infill development, but on our, our principles being financially sound is that we're acting as the land developer, real estate developer for the University of Calgary. So making sure that we could justify a return because that return actually goes into endowment. So that was part of being financially sound. But in this area, because we are infill location and because what we are trying to do is create a, a vibrant neighborhood, the density and number of people in order to support the retail was a critical component. So in established areas, one, one thing's that people don't always draw the connection is, is that the, you'll hear the number of rooftops um, versus the retail. In this situation, you know, we already had some existing working populations, which is quite a, often an advantage in an infill or an established area. And how do you build off of those? Um, so we were really looking to create the vibrancy and the density was one of the things that create the vibrancy.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. And, and on the, uh, the school front, when you said, uh, a mixed-use school site, maybe I didn't understand it right, but it was definitely something I've never heard before. Does that mean um, it, it can be turned into a mixed-use site if the schools decides not to develop there? Or is it actually other things existing on the school site in conjunction with the school? I didn't understand.
No, it's a great question. We looked at some examples and there's a couple of examples, one in Saskatchewan and one in Toronto where there was actually a school at grade and then had residential above. The example in Saskatchewan, I believe it actually was a seniors facility above. So the synergy between the seniors using the gym at night and the students using the gym during the day really had the ground floor activated at all times. So that was a, a really interesting component. The other one is in Toronto in the Distillery District where they actually had a school and the arts component in the Distillery District where jewelry making, glass blowing, things like that. Students were able to come in and watch those things. So the idea to have a mixed-use building, which is a school at ground floor and either have residential, seniors or rental above was what we were describing in a mixed-use scenario.
Very int- have you actually acted on that or is it still two empty sites in your development?
No, well, one has been triggered, so the school has already deferred to the second site. So we'll see what happens in the second site.
And then just a, just a quick question on that on site servicing with the, with the school sites. Were the sites serviced, uh, before the decision was made with the schools or?
No, it was part of the planning process.
Right, okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilor Refed.
Yeah, thank you very much for your, um, for your presentation. Lots of inspiring ideas there. Um, and, uh, yeah, I definitely want to come tour at some point. I haven't been to that part of Calgary in recent times. What, where, where are you at in this staging out of this or in your built form? Are you still at the planning stage? You're starting to get some?
No, uh, we, we are actually quite, quite, uh, moving fast. Um, we have, I, all of the buildings I showed previously are either, um, let me just scroll up. So all of this, we focused our, our efforts in the northwest corner. So you can see all, everything that has a dot on it is actually, um, completed and occupied. And all around there, we have, uh, this year we'll have seven additional sites under construction on top of the ones that you see here. So we have been quite successful in regards to absorption rates and getting people to move into the community, but also establishing a bit of a, a vibe. So we have, the, the Central Commons Park was a huge component to that, but also our retailer. So having the Cineplex VIP there was a huge component. You know, surprisingly, like the ice cream stores and some of the treat stores drive it, but also the restaurants and having a, a variety of different types of things to do and go.
Excellent. Yeah, and I think my colleagues kind of picked up on kind of the same sort of things that intrigued me. Um, your mixed-use school sites and how to integrate that. I think there's, um, I, I think as a culture, we, we need to get better at kind of integrating our school sites. So I like that. Um, the Skype site that you're talking about, um, is that, do you know, is it designated like K-nine or is it going to be high school? Because, I mean,
is that, do you know, is it designated like K nine or is it going to be high school? Cause I mean, I understand there's different. Yeah, there's different sizes and requirements for schools, right?
It was K to nine on that scenario.
Okay. And for both sites will be K to nine?
Both sites would be the same, yeah.
Okay, great. And, um, yeah, and then the idea about the downsizers, Councilor Freco had indicated, um, you know, is that generations get to that point of, there's a huge demand, um, and I think, uh, just referencing my mom, it's all about, you know, she doesn't want to do stairs because her knees aren't so good. So how do we, you know, deliver a product that can help, you know, the downsizers, you know, without affecting their mobility. And I think one of the challenges we have in, in the densification that we've been talking about is a model that often relies on too many stairs, which is not attractive, you know, if your mobility is starting to get limited. So, um, yeah, it'd be great to just see kind of your examples, uh, like you mentioned, you had duplexes and, and bungalow type approaches to that.
Yeah, we call them stacked, stacked bungalows. That's kind of maybe more, more of a marketing name, but they were done by Brookfield Development. And the idea is that there was a collection of individual buildings that only had only eight units in them. You'd go in and you'd actually have a garage at the back. You can park, that was still your garage. You're not entering into a, a common parcade. Then you go into a common corridor and then that common corridor takes you up in an elevator to one of four stories where usually you were one of two or one of three units on that floor at all. So that elevator lobby space actually became part of your common space. Uh, but those units are quite a bit larger, but they are popular with our, our downsizing demographic. Um, so taking their single family home and moving into that. And, and they also have an outdoor component within the site, but they're also in university district. One of the things is you're always one block away from a park. So having the ability to go to a park, uh, one of the interesting things I had was we went out to the residents to talk about our Northwest Commons park. And at that time we had a lot of seniors. And I was like, so, you know, what do you guys want in a park space? And I guess it's not a playground. And they, they were like, of course it's a playground. How are my grandchildren going to come play with me? And like, uh, you know, what am I going to go watch? So we actually did um, an accessible park and it won, uh, Mayor's Urban Design Award and also his National Demonstration Site for Inclusivity. And the, the one thing that's been really nice about that park space is the way that we designed it is it's adults and seniors actually participating on the playground because of it's easy to go up to. So that's been a nice thing to see from the result of that.
Excellent. And maybe just two more, uh, comments. Uh, one was, is, I really liked your approach, um, I think to your permability approach. It's like, we're not going to set what the build form is. We're just saying that there has to be so much permability to access it. Um, and I think that was a really great, you know, approach to ensure that everybody can, can access it, but not constraining any creative development ideas. So I really applaud that approach. And then, um, I think you've highlighted just about every stage of life that you could kind of be here, which is really great. Um, perhaps missing a demographic that's important to, uh, my residents. Uh, where are the dog walkers and off-leash parks?
Yeah, so, well, uh, funny enough, dog parks were a huge issue when we were going through the community engagement. So one of the things, and it was very divisive. It was almost like for everyone, we had bring a dog park. We had someone, don't bring a dog park. So what we did was we really looked at what could the dog park's location be and what's the form of it? So we actually did an urban dog park. So it's a little bit smaller of a dog park, which actually separates small and, and big dogs, took advantage of a, a existing grove of trees and put in artificial turf. And it's actually been, it was open before any of our retailers opened. And I was quite surprised how many people would go there to meet and, and created to be friendships. And I don't know if dogs, they look like they were friends. I could, I could tell there was lots of activity there. That was a really nice thing to see because it actually activated the area quite a bit. So it's not your traditional dog park where it's really large. You can still throw a ball. You still, your dog has lots of room to, to play and stuff like that. But it's just in a different format and in a location that was amenable to, uh, everyone.
Excellent. Uh, yeah, well, I applaud you with your innovative ideas and, um, I will try to reach out to get a tour because it it sounds like some, some great ideas to, to see and experience. So thank you very much for your presentation.
No, thank you for having me.
Mayor John.
Yeah, thank you. Um, appreciate your presentation. Thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, want to give a shout out to our administration for placing us on our agenda tonight. Um, probably strategically, I'm thinking. Um, the timing is excellent. Uh, given our, we're having a strategic planning session in March. Um, and this, I think you're, I don't have any questions. I, I love your approach. I've been to your site many times, uh, in the theater, had coffee there, had ice cream there. I think my niece is renting a place or about to rent a place there to go to U of C. Um, and you've, I do love your, uh, your language tonight. Um, and this is a great example for us as we enter into these talks and strategy and visioning into our future about what we mean by raising the bar on our development industry and on our communities and neighborhoods in Cochrane. Um, thank you for, um, again, sharing your, your development with us. I think it's, uh, it's innovative and refreshing and just love the approach. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's my pleasure. And, and I wanted to kind of, to show some of the, the innovative thinking that we had around flexibility, adaptability. Uh, one of the funny things is there was no skip the dishes and Uber Eats when we were going through the planning process. So we're, we're adapting to that right now, but it was really interesting how fast the world changes and stuff like that. But it was my pleasure. Your staff, uh, administration was really great and asked great questions and I appreciated coming out. And like I said, I'm proud. So I, I had no problem doing it.
That you, you obviously have passion for what you're doing. Um, and I would say many of us have talked about wanting to tour the site. Maybe we could do a joint planning tour with all of us together and we can, um, come and see your site in the summertime.
That'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, over to me. Um, as, as the others have said, I really appreciate you taking the time to go and ask, I have some questions for you.
Oh, sorry.
Don't run off just yet. Um.
I was out the door. No.
No, 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 no. Not letting you go yet. Um, thanks very much for joining us. I appreciate you coming out here, especially with the weather and the roads, the way they are. Sincerely appreciate it, as everybody else has said. Um, I really am impressed with what you guys have done with the district. Um, speaking from my experience, I find it can be very diff- difficult to get something different out of development. It feels like the whole development industry in our region or just in Cochrane is like moving in one direction. Everybody builds the same, they're, like the same things are happening all over. And to really change the dial and to do something different is quite challenging. And I'd love that you guys have been able to do that. Uh, so my first question is, I'm wondering, how do you, how do you set the vision and communicate it to all the various stakeholders? Cause you've got the city, you've got the various builders. Um, can you comment on that? Is it, is it, is it just in the policy documents themselves or is it something more than that?
No, it's very similar to the presentations I give today. So we, we go out and we, we talk to the builders and we talk to developers. A lot of the stakeholders that participated in the community engagement are some of the people that actually have moved into university district. And if not, are in the surrounding communities and we'll see them at the coffee shop or we'll see them in there. Um, so it, working with, uh, city administration has probably been one of the biggest benefits. So we have some unique things that we've done on the wayfinding component. We spent some time, uh, talking about those special materials. And that's kind of where we came up with not having them everywhere. How does maintenance work? How do things like that work? So it's really uh, fostering those conversations and finding the balance. I mean, the balance is the key word that we really focused on and how do we work with administration to create somewhere that's unique. So unique in character and also unique in activity and place. So you know you've arrived there without someone putting a big sign in your face, letting you know you're there, that you actually arrived at somewhere unique. It is quite the challenge. Um, coming from the development industry, I've been working in development industry for twenty, twenty-five years. There's a balance between um, the economics of it and also creating that unique dis- distinction. So I think just working with developers and having some of those conversations and finding out, you know, what they're, they're, what's driving them versus what's administration or council's looking to drive and try to find the balance is probably my best advice.
So when your ongoing communications at every step, whether it's with the city or with the builders, did all of your conversations start with, look, we're trying to do something different here?
Not always. I think sometimes at, at the start it was for sure, but as we've moved through, I think we've got a lot of buy-in. One of the things that I think has been really important to us is through the planning department at the City of Calgary, we've really had good champions. And those champions, when we come in for applications, kind of steward the way they kind, uh, they're bought into the vision. They also promote the vision. They also work through the challenges of maybe a new person coming on the file or maybe something that doesn't fit with an exact standard and how we do it. Um, so that's really helped too.
And I also found it very interesting, your presentation, you said you had the nearby, um, community associations sign off on the plan. Um, did you go to the community associations with something previously put together and say, this is what we want to do? Do you like it? Or did you go to them first? Like, at what stage did you go to public consultation?
So we did two, uh, two segments of public consultation. The first one was very organic where there was no plan, but there was targets. These are the targets and densities we want to hit. This is the, uh, uh, place we're trying to create. So therefore we did have some targets. So it wasn't a blank slate and things like that. We knew we had to be higher density because of major activity center. But it was really like, how does it come out of the ground? What's the form? And it was like Lego blocks and people pushing things around. And that's really how the core came to be because the communities to the south didn't necessarily want the density that close. And the communities to the north didn't really necessarily want that density close. But the synergy of that was it actually created an urban village core, um, which we were able to take advantage of and actually makes it a little bit more walkable. So and then from there, once we had a plan, we went out to the communities to show them, here's what, you know, what we created together. Here's how it's been worked through the consultants and the process. And then now, now here's what our application to the city is. And then once we had city comments, we went out to another open house to get buy-in. Uh, not surprisingly, a lot of the conversations weren't around the place. Uh, it was largely probably not around the land use, but more around transportation. So transportations were the ones that we really had to have the conversations around the triggers and, and what we're actually doing. So we actually created an intersection on Shag and Happy Trail at the very state to make sure that our transportation, um, connections right off the bat weren't constrained or they were shortcutting through the surrounding communities. So that was a, again, we did some strategic steps at the front to make sure that people knew that we, we were going to do what we said we were going to do.
Okay, great. And the last thing for me, just to comment, just to kind of throw something into the public realm for everybody to think about. I would love if we could look at doing something like this in Cochrane, um, just in this presentation, you're thinking like the name of it, it could be like an innovation district or something that would be applied to our, uh, undeveloped commercial and industrial areas that are, you know, outside the, the historic downtown. Just a thought. You inspired me tonight. So thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. We're currently working on the redevelopment of the University Research Park into an innovation district. So
Cool.
It's right on point, on topic.
Great. Anything else from administration or anybody else? From yourself?
No, thank you again for having me. Again, I really appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And good luck tonight.
Carry on through our agenda. Everybody good for break? Uh, next up is item five B, growth study update. Uh, Mr. Spence, please come forward and, uh, join us.
Good evening Deputy Mayor Nagel and members of the committee, the whole. I'm here this evening with, uh, Mark Spence, our senior planner and, uh, representative from Urban Systems, our consultant that's helping us with the growth study and doing the research and analysis to prepare the work. And the urban system staff here today are Chris, Justin, and Sarah. And so should you have any technical questions on how the information was prepared, they will, uh, be pleased to assist with answers. So today, the purpose of my presentation is to provide an update on the progress of this project to date, to provide a summary of the key findings, uh, to provide next steps and then to answer any questions you may have. So the project intent. This is a project that's looking at providing foundational information to the, uh, the town of Cochrane. It's an objective assessment of the landscape, of enacted policy and of infrastructure. It identifies what land is developable within the town. It provides population and employment projections for the next twenty-five years until, uh, twenty forty-seven. It identifies a range of land needs to accommodate future growth. And again, it provides foundational information for the preparation of a new municipal development plan. Every municipal development plan process begins with taking a snapshot of the community and looking at the context. And this growth study is serving that purpose. And I'd also like to point out that it aligns with the twenty-five-year water forecast. So that is the first, I guess, intent of this, uh, growth study. The second is to identify which lands are most conducive for development. And we're going to take a bit of a reductionist approach and look at where it makes more sense to develop as opposed to where it may be more challenging to develop, especially in the near term. And third, it'll be a resource for policy preparation and perhaps for your strategic discussions which are upcoming. And it considers possible, not preferred pathways and opportunities to accommodate growth. So again, it's foundational information and this document, when it's complete, will help not just the administration and council make decisions. It'll help developers who are considering investing within this community and all municipal stakeholders. This is good information and information that, that can be used in decision-making. We are not proposing a strategy or policy at this point. We're providing you with information. So today we're going to update you on land supply and land demand, which is a work that has been substantially complete to date. What's upcoming is a suitability assessment and options for growth. So I'd like to just briefly talk about land supply and land demand. Land supply is determined by three critical factors. One is the physical landscape, the enacted policy, which includes a municipal development plan, and servicing considerations where the roads are, where the sewer pipes are, where the water pipes are and other services needed to, uh, to enable development. Demand is generated by population growth. Now, we have looked at in this growth study, demand from a residential perspective and from an employment land perspective. So on the residential side, population growth drives the need for dwellings, which drives a need to have land allocated for those dwelling units. Similarly, for employment, for employment lands, you have population that drives anticipated jobs that creates and generates a need for land. And we've broken it out into a low, medium and high scenarios. And I'll, I'll get into that in just a bit. So what are these physical parameters? Well, they include slopes, they include the river, they include the built in environment, they include, uh, right-of-way's and other landscape, uh, consideration. And as we all know, uh, Cochrane has a very attractive natural environment, but one that has got a lot of natural features that, uh, do provide constraints to development. And then we've got policy and servicing. So you've got lands that are identified for development. And we look at that and say, okay, well, how can we make that development occur here? But we also have to look at the servicing. Does it make sense to have pipes go in this direction when it may be uphill? Where you may need lift stations and other infrastructure improvements? Or is it more logical to proceed in this direction where you may not need that type of, uh, of servicing? So that is what dictates your land supply. So if we'd have a first look at what the policy within Cochrane is, is showing, it's showing land in green as developable. And you'll notice that it's almost eight hundred hectares identified as developable, which appears to be a very, very large number. As you can see, the, the, uh, the boundary of Cochrane is, uh, is shown there in the dash black line. Now, if we take a closer look at those lands, we'll find that some of them are special policy areas and those are identified in dark green. Those require future planning. Engineering studies, perhaps, uh, design guidelines in order for those, uh, for those parcels to be developed out fully. We've also got on the, on the west side of the, uh, the municipality, existing acreages. And with existing acreages, they may or may not all develop out. And the, that, those lands are less reliable to count on. So we're not saying that they won't develop out. We're just saying that, uh, if we take them out, they're about two hundred hectares, which means that, uh, we're down to about six hundred hectares of reliable land. And then two hundred, which, uh, which will require a bit more effort to develop out. Although it's not out of the equation, they, they are definitely a bit more challenging to develop. So again, the driver is population growth, which generates dwelling needs, which generates land needs. So when we were preparing the growth study, we, uh, we took information from the City of Calgary. And, uh, that formed the low growth scenario for the municipality. We then looked at actual trends from the past and that generated the high. And then we created a medium category right down the middle. So, starting in twenty twenty-one, we have a known figure of thirty-two thousand one hundred ninety-nine residents here in the town of Cochrane. If we project out to twenty forty-seven or twenty-five years into the future, at the low end, we'll have about sixty-six thousand people, again, if we're extending the trends. At the high end, about eighty-six thousand and the median at about seventy-six. Now, if you look at it from a percentage basis, the low is a two-point-eight percent growth rate annually and the high is three-point-nine. It's only a one-point-one percent spread. Yet over a twenty-five-year period, it's a difference of twenty thousand people. Yet, over a twenty-five-year period, it's a difference of twenty thousand people. So, in looking at historic dwelling growth within the town. If you see on the far left, you have two thousand and one, and there are about four thousand dwelling units within the, uh, town of Cochrane. By twenty twenty-one, in two decades, there were twelve thousand. So, Cochrane tripled the number of dwelling units between two thousand and one, two thousand and twenty-one. You notice that the bar at the bottom in gray, that's single-family residential. So, the majority of homes constructed were single-family residential during those two decades. Now, if we project out twenty-five years from twenty twenty-one to twenty forty-seven. We go from twelve thousand dwelling units in twenty twenty-one to about thirty-six thousand in twenty-five years. But what's really interesting about this graph is by twenty thirty-five, we double the number of dwelling units. That's twelve years. That's just working off of trends. What I'll also point out on this graph is that the percentage of ground-oriented multifamily. And apartments is increasing relative to single-family residential as we move through time. So, I find this graph very informative in that it shows the split right now of being about sixty-fourty. Sixty percent of the stock is single-family residential and forty percent is ground-oriented multifamily with apartments. In twenty-five years, if we just extend the trend, it's going to be about fifty-fifty. So, obviously, if we're generating a demand for dwelling units, we're going to generate a demand for land. And this is showing the demand going from under a hundred hectares in twenty twenty-three to nearly a thousand hectares in twenty forty-seven. Over a twenty-five-year period. So, what does that mean? It means that, uh, in order to accommodate residential growth at the low growth scenario. At least six hundred hectares are necessary. At the high end, it's over a thousand. So, we've provided ranges here. But having said that, if, uh, if our annual growth rate is three-point-nine percent, that's an actual that we can look back on. I would suggest the high end is likely where, where the growth will be occurring and not the low end. So, employment land, how much do we need? Well, again, population growth is a driver for employment land. There are jobs for industry, there are land use categories, and then there's a land requirement. Very similar to, uh, to the residential piece. Once again, we use low, medium, and high scenarios. The low, the data was obtained from the city of Calgary, the high was based on our, um, actuals trending. And, uh, the medium was, uh, was a determination point in between. So, currently, if you look to the far left in twenty twenty-one, there are nine thousand employees working here in Cochrane. In twenty-five years, it'll be eighteen thousand. And not to confuse us with people working in Calgary and living in Cochrane, these are people actually working in Cochrane. See, the gray bar at the bottom is showing most of them in the, uh, in the commercial category. Uh, followed by the industrial in dark green and then institutional. In terms of, uh, sectors where these, uh, employees will be employed. So, what does that generate for land demand? Well, for the commercial, it generates a need of about thirty-seven to sixty-five hectares. For the institutional, eight to eleven hectares. And for the industrial, between fifty-six and ninety-two hectares. For a total need of between a hundred and a hundred and seventy hectares. To generate employment lands for eighteen thousand employees. Here it is on a graph, once again, with the high, medium, and low. And so, which categories did these employees fall into? So, these top five account for fifty-five percent of the categories, the top three for over forty percent. So, there are other categories, their percentage becomes smaller as we move through it. But I thought that I would share the top five and they are construction, professional, scientific, technical, healthcare, retail, and transportation warehousing. Just to give you an idea. So, the total demand for land is between six hundred and forty hectares and eleven hundred and fifty hectares. That demand would be satisfied partly by infill, partly by unoccupied lots. But the vast majority would be new land required as greenfield development. So, the estimate for land supply within municipal boundaries is between six hundred to eight hundred hectares. And I really want to, uh, to underscore that that number typically goes down when you start doing more detailed planning because new constraints are found. The land demand at eleven hundred and fifty, depending on our, if our percentage of growth annually goes up, the land demand will go up. So, I don't see the difference between the land supply and land demand as shrinking at any time. Actually see that, that gap increasing. So, this is probably the most informative slide. What it's showing is that, uh, we've got land and hectares required, and we've got time at the bottom. And you'll notice that between twenty thirty-seven and twenty forty-one. Is when we will have consumed six hundred to eight hundred hectares. And we run out of land within current town boundaries. So, the next steps are, again, a suitability assessment of what, what those lines are, are best suited for within, within town boundaries. And that's work that, that's upcoming. And then we'll be creating options for growth. So, today, we're here before yet committee of the whole. We'll be taking the same information and providing it to the, uh, Cochrane Planning Commission on March fifteenth. We anticipate completion of the growth study here in Q-two, so by mid-year. And so, we'll bring back the entire document in full before the committee and present it. And from there, we would take this information, provided that, uh, council received it favorably. For adoption by resolution, again, once again, to create this foundational information that will be used in, in various decision-making capacities. And, and I will again underscore that, uh, we are going to use it as foundational information for the municipal development plan preparation. And in effect, it's step one. If we were to start a municipal development plan preparation process, we'd be starting with a, a context study similar to what this growth study is providing at this point. And obviously, it'll inform other exercises, including a twenty-five-year water study. Oh, now, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, quite the presentation. Uh, Councilor Fedeko.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I actually don't have too many questions, just maybe some more comments. Um, I, I realize that that number probably sounds big and scary to a lot of our residents here. As to kind of anticipating what the future growth is going to be for Cochrane. But I think if we went back to that first presentation that we had tonight. It's not about the amount of people that live here, but it's how we are doing development. And there are so many people that I've talked to that. It, it's not about a new community coming on board, but it's, it's how we're developing that community. And the things that we're also missing along the way. Um, it's rec space, it's, it's making sure that we have, you know, we're growing. We have school sites to be able to provide for our children. And, and I realize that that is not necessarily our decision-making capability, that's a provincial issue. But it's all those things that we have to look at, that it's not just about plopping more people into a community. If we don't have places for the kids to go to school, we don't have recreation fields for them to play on, we aren't offering the amenities that they have. Then, all of this, to me, really doesn't matter if it's in twenty years, fifty years, or a hundred years. We, we, we have to be able to provide the services so that people are attracted to stay and set up their roots here. And, and I mean, I think we all live in Cochrane because we love Cochrane. It's, we, we recognize the beauty, we recognize the positives, we, we see the heart. Um, but all of this really means nothing if we, if we're really kind of turning a blind eye and just rolling over land and gonna build some more townhouses on it. And I don't say that in an insulting way. But we need to create a community that's a whole community. And I think a bigger part of that conversation is how do we develop it? Um, how do we bring people together? How do we keep people to stay in Cochrane and call this not just their, their house, but their home? And, and to me, those are two different terms. House is one thing, home is another, it's, it's how we create community.
Thank you. Councilor McFadden.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, congratulations, uh, John, to you and your team for an excellent presentation. Um, and I certainly appreciate the fact that you framed it in, this is a knowledge piece that's gonna inform our future planning. And, uh, as Councilor Fedeko identified, um, the, the piece that's probably gonna get some attraction is in twenty-five years, we're looking at, you know, upwards of, a population of seventy thousand and. And, you know, having moved here in oh-four and, and since that time, certainly hearing that, uh, everybody who moves here wants to be the last person to move here. And so, we're, you know, we're dealing with that, um, some reluctance to grow. But because we've created such an amazing community, that drive, um, to move here continues. And so, the big piece for me, of course, is, is as we look to the future, um, and, and not to stick our head in the sands, that the growth is going to happen. But as always, that, um, that growth needs to be on our terms. And we saw an excellent example tonight about how growth can be innovative, um, and pushing the envelope and an example to others. And so, I really see this information you provided with us today not to really have, um, any value, uh, that's the wrong word. It has a lot of value, but it's not, uh, prescribing that growth is, growth is a must-have, it's just saying, this is a reality we're going to be dealing with. And then it gives us that framework for informed decision-making, which I think is really important. So, I appreciate the work, um, and I think it's, this is gonna be a great step in making sure that our policymaking is, is informed. Um, and allows us to create the best possible decisions as we're looking to planning in the future. Um, so, all that being said, um, I had, um, two questions, um, just to start with on this. Um, the first is when you're identifying the, uh, the land demand, you'd identify the different sectors. Um, but has it also included the, um, expectation of school sites, uh, within that?
Uh, through the chair to, uh, to Councilor McFadden. The, the new development areas will need to take into consideration school sites. So, the planning will have to be comprehensive and look at where the residential occurs, where the roads go, where the schools are. That will all be taken into consideration. We're defining what the raw material is in terms of land available at this point. And so, that, that's the figures, but yes, that will be factored into the future planning, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't see it listed in your kind of, uh, segmentation. And then the next is, uh, you'd also, uh, forecasted, um, different employment sectors that we're expecting to see here in Cochrane. How did you land on identifying those sectors? Is that just an extra, um, just expanding what we've got currently, or is that from market research, or how are we getting that segmentation?
I would ask, uh, Justin Bear from Urban Systems, he's a land development specialist that, that created this information, to speak to that question.
Sorry, so the question was related to the segments, the industrial sector segments in the employment forecast, is that correct?
Yeah, it was the overall employment sectors.
Yeah, so the overall.
Four or five segmentations identified.
Sure.
I'm just trying to determine.
So, the three segments that were presented, sort of three buckets, the institutional, commercial, and industrial, those are basically the different kind of general land use typologies that we've sort of funneled the different. Like, a much broader list of industrial sectors into. So, we took the twenty major kind of industry or employment type sectors, and we allocate each to a different type of land use. Now, the, the growth of each of those employment sectors, some are tied back directly to population growth. Because there's generally a pretty clear relationship between the growth of population and the growth of employment. In other sectors, there's, uh, slightly less of a connection with population growth. It's more about what's happening regionally and what shares of the regional growth might we expect under different circumstances. Now, the source of the base employment numbers, this all comes from the city of Calgary's projections for regional transportation demand. So, that's where the base, the low set, the, the low forecast scenario came from. And from those allocations and those proportions, we use those as the basis to create the high scenario. And then the middle scenario is basically splitting the difference between the two.
Okay, so it's sourced from kind of the existing research that the city of Calgary is leaning on? Um, is it possible, can we pull up the, uh, the slide with the, uh, employment sections on there, segments? Yeah, so, so this, this is kind of the one that I had in mind.
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, the, the five different ones. So, you're just pulling it from there and just kind of taking a, a best forecast based on experience and, and how we're seeing those fill into the, um.
Yeah, effectively, what's, what, basically what we do is we take the Calgary forecast, which breaks down employment at the traffic zone level by industry sector. Then we go through a process of stripping out the portions of that employment that likely will not require land, like dedicated land. So, those would be, uh, people who either work from home or people who have no fixed place of work. So, this is how Statistics Canada breaks out their employment numbers into these three sectors. And then, once we strip those out, we then are left with employees at what are called a usual place of work. And then, from there, we have to determine, based on historical splits, based on our understanding of industry trends, based on where we think the world is gonna go, which is always a fun exercise. Um, we then have to go and figure out what are the employment densities and how does this likely convert to land need? Now, obviously, land need is gonna be driven by the density at which buildings are constructed on the land. So, there could be definitely swings if the nature of development changes. So, part of this is based on historical trend, part of this is based on our best guess of where things are gonna go.
Okay, yeah, the only one that really surprised me was the transportation warehousing at six percent. I'm not sure what our current breakout is, but we don't have much and I'd be surprised if it was six percent. So, that was an intriguing one. And then I just guess, uh, one last question. Um, when you're forecasting and preparing all of this, this isn't, um, this forecast isn't including any policy changes. This is kind of status quo of what we've got. If we kept on doing the same thing, this is what we're gonna be looking at?
Yeah, if, uh, effectively, yes, effectively, the policy. The allocation of employment demand is driven by some underlying assumptions around where policy likely evolves, and that's generally historically driven. So, certainly, especially for employment sectors that may not be directly tied to population. And it becomes more of a question of where is there available land that meets Sector X's criteria? Um, it may well be in Cochrane, it may well be elsewhere in the region. So, it's a bit of a chicken and an egg phenomenon of the industry will go where the land is available that meets their criteria for location. So, there's a certain level of assumption that goes into the forecast that says, we are assuming that suitable land will be available to attract these industries. If those don't exist, then the industry will go elsewhere.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mayor Janong.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so glad that we're doing this work. Um, we, as in you. Uh, and I mean that as a joke, but I, I'm so glad that the community of Cochrane is, is embarking on this exercise. Uh, and I really appreciate your presentation tonight, excellent. Um, from beginning to end, I thought, John, I think you really outlined well that this is a snapshot in time, not a policy or, or something that we're aiming for. This is just what is going to happen and I, I really appreciate how you laid that out. Um, also appreciated, um, the highlighting the, the key points along the, the slide deck tonight. Um, again, I think this is a, an excellent timing for this presentation, so thank you, uh, to the team for that. Um, and I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say, Councilor Fedeko, uh, your comments, I'm not going to repeat them, I think you said that beautifully. Uh, and that is our work. Our work is exactly what you outlined, that, um, and I said this in the State of Cochrane address, that. Mm, one of my goals for our community is not to measure it with a population number. And population, if we're doing our work well as council, as, as a whole team. It won't matter what the population is of Cochrane, it will be the look and feel of our community. We'll have all of those things that make Cochrane great, um, and that already make Cochrane a great place to live. So, um, I'm excited about, um, having more conversations exactly like you just laid out. But thank you for your presentation.
Um, seen no other comments from my colleagues, I guess that leaves me to ask questions and comment. Um, my first question, are you sure your growth numbers aren't too conservative? You had like three-point-nine percent as the high rate. I feel like, I feel like my entire time on council, which is like nearly ten years, we've been budgeting at four percent growth and blowing into the water every single year.
Except for that one.
I would, uh, I would agree with you. That if anything, uh, being conservative would be picking a number at the higher end. But we're going off of actuals here, and that's, uh, that's where we got the three-point-nine percent. And, uh, that's a historic trend that we're, we're extrapolating at this point. Certainly, um, given the attractiveness of Cochrane, given recent trends, and given recent interest in Cochrane, that could increase. Again, this is a snapshot, this is as, as, uh, as Mayor Janong had put it, uh, we are extrapolating trends right now. We're showing what could be if we continued on, not necessarily what will be. And there are, there are mechanisms such as a municipal development plan, which will create policy that can shape that growth. But, uh, if, uh, if anything, I'd, I'd suggest that, uh, there will be continued high interest in people wanting to move to Cochrane.
Perhaps the mismatch in my recollection is I'm thinking assessment, whereas you're just referencing population growth. Because assessment is population multi- Because assessment is population multiplied by growth and the value of their home of the property, right? So your number is just population number?
Yeah, no, we, we did not factor in assessment.
Right. Okay. So that, that's probably where in my mind I'm thinking is way more than 4%. Okay. Um, so I have some comments. I have no other questions, um, other than, uh, like the first thing I want to say is, as the mayor said, I'm very happy we're having this big picture conversation. It's, um, very refreshing to be having like huge picture conversation with the future of Cochrane. On the, uh, on the political note of growth, I guess I would just comment and say, I spent like the first like five or six years of my time as a councillor trying to stop or slow growth at all costs. At one point I actually proposed we freeze development approvals, that sort of thing. Um, and I'm very much of the new school of thought that like, we're not going to be able to stop growth. Growth is coming, so we need to figure out how to deal with it appropriately. Um, and on that note though, I would add, I still hear in the community, people tell me, oh, you councillors need to stop approving so much development, but it's like, we haven't approved a new neighborhood in five years. Um, that's just something that I feel like has never spoken about enough in the public realm. Um, so we aren't approving a bunch of growth, but it's still coming anyways because it's already been approved. Um, but, uh, yeah, this is about controlling growth for me, and that's where I want to mention a few things that I, just some comments to put out there for, so everyone knows like where I'm at on growth. The one thing is, um, uh, before you joined us, we, we talked about this density gradient. I don't know if you've heard this concept come from us, but I'd really like us to keep that in mind. I feel like, uh, we've always tried to meet our density targets on like an ASP and neighborhood plan level. And then we end up with this like mosaic of growth options or density options in each neighborhood where it's like, every single neighborhood is a collection of a little bit of high density, a little bit of medium density, a little bit of low density. I'd really like us to look at density from like a municipal perspective. So we have high density in the middle and then actually um, have the lower density options on the outskirts of Cochrane, where we're just doing big, single detached homes, but then a higher density in the middle. That's something I want us to remember as we're continuing to talk about growth. Um, and I would add, I feel like we had unanimous consent and, uh, agreement on that as a group. And then, um, also, and I think when we're talking about commercial residential split, I think we should do what we can to push that further towards commercial and industrial and not just say, well, hey, this is the status quo. These are the extrapolated numbers. I think we should try and push it and try and go for a bit more of like the build it and they will come mentality with commercial and industrial zoning, uh, to try and get more economic activity. And then the third piece that I feel like has not really been done by us, and it's not to fault anybody, it's just, we just haven't gotten to it. I feel like we need to get really solid on our growth story and start talking about that to the provincial governments, the federal government to a lesser extent. But really to the provincial government, it's like, I've met a number of MLAs and ministers and they go, Cochrane, that's growing quite a bit. Hey, like, yes, we've like doubled in 10 years, but they just don't know, which I understand, because like, I don't know what has happened in Sherwood Park or Ladue, like, I, 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 how should they know? And it's like, when we look at the number of ambulances we have, the lack of a hospital here, we look at the number of schools. It's like the people of the provincial government literally don't know how fast Cochrane's growing. I think we need to get really solid on our own growth story and start telling it every single level of government, like, hey, you better start planning because we're going to be 80,000 people by 2050, or whatever that number was. Because I don't think the province knows that. But, uh, yeah, those are my comments. Anything for anybody else? No? Administration? Presenter? Nothing else? Okay. Great. Well, that is the end. Thank you for joining us. Um, do we want to take a quick, uh, eight minute bio and cell phone break? Come back at 6:50? I am the chair. We're ready. Okay. I believe we're live again. That brings us back, uh, to our agenda. Let's go with item 5C, the Historic Ranch and Glenbow Pathway Improvements. Mr. Ham.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I just wanted to come here tonight to remind everyone of the discussion we had on March 22 about the African track. Administrations, um, um, will to apply for a grant that would cover the north-south corridor of pathways in Cochrane. Uh, we brought that forward with a request of, uh, $550,000 in funding toward, from the Infrastructure Reserve to, uh, put towards the 40% matched funding by the town. Um, through, through the capital project planning phase, we failed to include the wave finding portion of the project in that capital project budget. And so I'm coming here today to update that and include the $150,000 to the budget to increase the total budget for the project to 1.3 million dollars. Um, there's no ask for, um, increased funding as this has already been approved through council. We're just looking for that update to be acknowledged.
Thank you for providing the update. I will first comment and say, I can't believe it's been a year since we had that conversation. Um, does anybody have any else, anything else to add to that conversation? Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Just a quick one. Will this come back to council for a vote at the next meeting? That's the intention. That is correct. We're just looking to, uh, inform you of this coming.
So this is just a quick heads up that, um, oh, sorry, uh, Councilor Wilson.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a clarity question about, um, 550 was the original ask and approval from council, and that was our contribution not including the transportation fund. And today is 150 extra only for wave, wave finding?
Uh, sorry, the 550,000 will be inclusive of the 150,000 that we're speaking of today. Um, and so there will be no increase in the allocation from the Infrastructure Reserve, nor an increase of the approved budget from council. We're just correcting an error made by administration, or myself, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then the clarity on wave finding was signage essentially along the pathway?
Yeah, there will be, uh, a public engagement, uh, session as well as, uh, planning and prepping the wave finding and then implementation.
Wonderful. And then, uh, maybe you'll have this answer, uh, next week too, but timeframes for, I know that I haven't heard anything since the grant was, um, won or established, what, what timeframes do we have to act and what's the project?
There is some consultation with, uh, our indigenous partners, uh, currently in phase, and then there will be a, a joint announcement with Infrastructure Canada after that.
Wonderful. The exciting project. Um, looking forward to hearing it at a council meeting near us. Thanks.
Okay. That is all. Any further questions from anybody? No? Okay. Quick and efficient, just the way I like it. Let's move on to 5D, Cochrane Ranch Clubhouse. Also you, Mr. Ham.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just, I'm, I'm using it as much as possible. It's your last one.
I appreciate that.
Um, so this one is, uh, just to kind of bring a bit of a, a service level discussion around the Cochrane Ranch Clubhouse. Um, the Cochrane Ranch Clubhouse was established in 1909 or built in 1909. The town, uh, took an opportunity to, uh, refurbish it in the eighties, and then we did a full, uh, renovation of the site in 2017 with this council. Um, that site has been utilized for community functions and, uh, some opportunities internally to use it as a meeting space. And there's been some interesting, um, add-ons in terms of, um, like infrastructure for meeting spaces and things like that added to the space, which has been fantastic. And it's, and it's been utilized to some degree, um, over the last few years. Uh, over COVID, there was a, obviously the Community Services Department shrunk down in size, and we haven't been using it, uh, for programming space as much as we had previously. And so we're bringing this forward to potentially create an opportunity to have the discussion around, uh, leasing this space and creating an opportunity around leasing this space. So the opportunity would be creating a, a lease over 10 months, uh, per year that a, an organization would be able to utilize the space for that 10 months, that leaving the two summer months of July and August open for having a, um, either municipal run, uh, programming space, or we could work with community partners such as a library to program that space for two months of the year, maintaining what we had initially had established for that space in 2017, uh, um, through the renovation. Um, it also creates some intentional revenue increase for the town, um, and then continue the opportunity for community rentals on weekends for parties, birthday parties and, and small community events. Um, the social impact would be increased usage of, usage of the clubhouse, which is not overly utilized at this moment. It increases the community presence in the Cochrane Ranch, which I think is all about the connectivity and community building that we've been talking about through the strategic plan. And then a steady, steady usage of a town facility is, is, uh, is one of our principles, as well as an increased opportunity for collaborative programming with some of our community partners. Um, the financial impacts will be, um, a slight increase in revenue of $24,000 per year through the leasing mechanism, with an additional $10,000 per year based on the, the weekend rentals that would be, um, that could happen throughout the year for 12 months of the year. The operations and maintenance, um, estimated cost is roughly $20,000 per year. $10,000 of that would be cleaning and the other $10,000 would be continuing to maintain the water and wastewater system there. The, it's a system and we don't have, um, municipal utilities tied to that site, so we would be trucking in and out the, the, the facility, um, fluids. And then the storage facility that we're asking to add as a component of the site would be about $15,000. And that storage facility would be there for the regular leaseholder to store and utilize so that we can continue to utilize that space for weekend rentals and for summer program. Uh, we're, as we continue to connect things to the strategic plan, we're using livability, um, as our highest order of that connection with, uh, committing to creating a vibrant and active community with connected neighborhoods. That brings, um, an opportunity to lease that site to a potential community partner that could, could lease it for, for 10 months. Um, utilize that space to run their business or program out of, and it connects Cochrane Heights, the ranch, Sunset and, and Glenbow region to that area as well. Uh, uh, in addition to the pathways that we'll be running through there, um, in the previous discussion, uh, it just creates another opportunity for us to have that, um, continuous opportunity for the community can, to connect with the ranch, which I think is such an important part of, of Cochrane. Questions?
Councilor Fedego, first of the hop again.
I'm on the button tonight. Um, thanks for the presentation. Just one quick question. So when you're talking about the total approximate revenue being 34,000, and then operations and maintenance being 20,000, are you talking, is that 34,000, uh, they just, community groups or, or people utilizing the building and we're not talking about like an actual leaseholder or?
The 24,000 is representative of the leaseholder. The additional 10,000 would be representative of the additional rentals on weekends.
Gotcha. I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm. Gotcha. I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little surprised at, you know, the amount of revenue that could be pumped out to thirty four thousand, but yet we're paying twenty thousand dollars in operations and maintenance. It seems like a very, very small somewhat profit margin in my mind, but maybe I'll wait to hear some comments around the table of, of how we could. Of how we could drive that up and I, and I'm not sure if, if what's holding it back is. A leaseholder and, and then pumping it out to the community overall and then kind of raising maybe some of that revenue, but I, I don't see that as. Being a great use of, see it being a great way to gain some money and not that that's what it should be used for, but I just wonder if we don't have better uses for it. Have you looked at the opportunity of what it would be if we just actually lease this building out overall and, and what kind of revenue we might be looking at?
The, yes, we have. Just to give a little bit of a caveat, that we are already operating the space for ten thousand dollars a year. The increased ten thousand dollars is reflective of cleaning, the regular cleaning that, for the space. The ten thousand dollars that we currently spend per year on the site is, is reflective of water and wastewater maintenance. And so that isn't, that, we're trying to offset that number by adding the leaseholder and continuing the community rentals. It's not as though we're increasing by ten thousand dollars in expense.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm just interested to hear what everybody else's thoughts are around the table.
Counselor Flowers.
Hi, I believe that we still have in the books to do a review of the whole ranch. Is that true?
The review of the ranch was, was slid down the ladder in, instead we're moving the rec needs assessment in, into that. Position as of right now as that is going to meet a, a whole community need. But the master planning that will come from the rec's needs assessment will include the, the ranch.
I'd like to see this more as a pilot project so that we kind of feel it out and see how it goes. It's been a challenge that building right from day one, the size, the water, everything that goes along with it, but. It is on a shared space, so I'd hate to see someone get a long-term lease and then feel ownership over it and not want to leave. If we determine there's a better use for it.
And we can, we could definitely explore that. We have explored a few options around what that would look like in terms of a short term. Our, our challenge would be finding a leaseholder that would be looking at a short pilot to introduce their, their potential business to going into that space and we'd need to explore that further.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Junon?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the presentation tonight. Couple of questions. Square footage of the building?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I can share that with you at the next report.
Okay. The lease rate that you're using?
We base it on the market metrics for like a recreational facility. And so it's, it's works out to twenty seven dollars and change per square foot, which was the, the metric that we were using for.
Okay, and I don't have an opinion on the number. I just wondered how you came to that, so thank you for that background. My thoughts here, obviously this is an underutilized building in our inventory. We talked about it a little bit in the past. My thoughts are, we either lease it or we don't lease it. I understand the middle ground of where you're landing and that's the recommendation tonight. I get where you came from to get there and I can understand why that is the recommendation. It is kind of a dipping our toe into it, but I think we should actually just jump in. We need to either lease the space and I think we, and if we're gonna do, go down that road, maximize the lease. This is a special spot, special area. Let's charge premium for it. So that's why I was asking questions around the lease rate, like maybe it's fifty dollars a square foot and then we really shrink the market on who might go there, but then we're maximizing our return. To your point, Counselor Fedejo, about actually making this a revenue source. Or we don't at all. We know it's a cost, but we're gonna use it for something. And then if we're going down that road, then we need to market it. We need to let the community know that it's available. If that's what our plan is, but then let's figure out what the plan is and then go for that. But I think we go all in on either direction. Right now, I could go either, either way. That building, I think, has really been, not a sore spot, but it's been, like I say, underutilized, but it's, I think, somewhat due to the location. It's not really known about. It's hard to get to. The parking's not great. So we're really limited in who we could really market it to. So, but I think that's an opportunity. There could be a special. Business out there that might utilize it. I hear what you're saying, Counselor Flowers, about not wanting to enter into a long-term lease. But I think we need to look at opportunities when they arrive. This is one, I think. We are ending a lease here in the ranch house. Where, and I'm not talking about the use of that lease space. I'm talking about the revenue we're, we're not going to see anymore. And that was always the plan and I want to get into that. I, I agree with those outcomes. But this is an opportunity now to maybe capture some of that back. So if council sees it that way, I would, I think the plan should be to maximize it. If not, I'm okay with that too. Then let's, let's figure out what that is and then go for it. Not, not tiptoe around it. Let's just go for it. My two cents.
Respectfully, if I could just add some context, just so council has an understanding of where we're coming from. I think the approach has been looking at ways for a community service type oriented business or nonprofits to utilize the space, hence. Where we were looking at that market rate. And then the principles around how we came to the ten and two, the ten months and two months. It was about increasing the revenue, but not necessarily capitalizing on revenue generation. Because I think one of the core values is about increasing vibrancy and the activities that are occurring in that historic ranch. We also have the constraints that we're going to be facing over the next couple of years of access to that site because of the construction that's going on. So I think there's some constraints, not just the building constraints themselves, but the opportunity to, to really maximize the use of that space in the way that you may be. Thinking Mayor Junon, as opposed to us starting to think about what are some activities or opportunities for use of that building? That would energize the space throughout the next few years so that we can see what the opportunities are, see what the interest is. And really energize the ranch in a time where it might be challenging to do so.
If I could add to that slightly, I'd, I'd also like to add that there are very limited opportunities for community services to create indoor programming in. In the town-owned facilities and so that was one of the main reasons why we were trying to retain the two months, the, the summer months for potential community services programming in the future. I know that that isn't where we're, where our service level capacity is right now, but we would like to at least leave the space for us to keep that in mind for the future.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the context. And I, that is the middle ground and I, so if we go away from maximizing revenues. And go to programming of indoor space, I like that. Well, then let's decide that. Let's close it for two years or whatever it is while the construction happens and plan that out and then go all in on. That's what I'm saying. I think we should pick one or the other. I. I struggle with having someone move in and out. I don't, I just can't picture that. Maybe I'm, I don't, I'm not thinking about it the right way, but having somebody. Lease it from Monday to Friday and then having to pack up all their things and move out and then it's leased. It's a community building for the weekend. Gotta clean it on Sunday. Someone's coming back in on Monday to move back in to do their thing. I just see that's a lot of moving parts and not very clean. I just think that, let's just pick door number one or door number two. So.
The, the option to retain the, the community rentals is, is more of an optional that I've made in the report, but I, as, as a presentation, I just wanted to create the. Larger context of it and, and I agree, there is some challenges with weekend rentals and, and cleaning and programming and, and making all that fit together, but. Our, our initial thought process was really maximizing the community benefit and, and really trying to meet the need of the community. We do see a lot of weekend rentals for the space, so we don't want to necessarily take that away. We think that's a service level reduction. And then the idea of bringing a leaseholder into that space was really focused on the community, community services focused spaces so that. It still ties to what the, the vision for the clubhouse was in two thousand seventeen when we, when we input a lot of. Money, taxpayer money into revitalizing that space.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, you're starting to talk me back into.
Not trying to talk you into anything.
No, no. I'm starting to see it that way more from the conversation, but I think, okay, I'm still on option C, which is, let's just go for community space then. And let's make a big, bold announcement about that and then settle it in the community that we're gonna, we're gonna have a plan for the space and we're gonna work on the plan. And it's gonna be after the highway's done and it's gonna be a brand new space that we're gonna do X with. Thank you Chair.
Counselor Wilson, I guess the finger's not, not just be verbal.
Yeah, just had two quick questions about, one was the current way it's managed. I believe it's part of the ranch house portfolio and the ranch house manager. Is that the way it's booked and marketed? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Our, our ranch house events group manages that space along with the, the internals of the ranch house event center.
Okay, great. So any groups that are looking to book at the ranch house, weddings, conferences, whatever happens here would also have. They, they would see that one of the options is that clubhouse space to utilize too already. That's one of the things I wanted to know, right? Okay. And then on the ten and two topic, I was just interested to hear, I'm trying to think of the seasonality of the Cochrane Ranch. What, approximately, what are the seasons that we keep the washrooms open there and that? We consider, I don't know, the ranch open for, for business really right now. I know it's a lot more than two months. Is it four, six?
It's, the, the washrooms are open for six months of the year, but that life cycling is going to be coming up as well, so we need to find a conclusion to that.
Okay, I think that might be a useful topic too. We're talking about maybe what's presented as perfect ten and two. I, I haven't decided myself, but just interesting to think that. We'd have a, whatever, a private player there, I guess. During a lot of the usage time and only July and August, we keep it open to public events. I'm not sure if we've hit the right note there or maybe we have, but something to make note of anyway.
Counselor Fadden?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think my priority for the space, you know, because it is the ranch, is that this be a, a community focus. So wherever it lands. It needs to be servicing the community, you know, broadly. I can certainly get the attraction if we were just trying to get, you know, the largest financial outcome from this to. Offer it to a private business exclusively, but I think this is such a valuable community space that we have to commit to it being. Delivering to a community service broadly. So, and I, and I hear the concerns. But also knowing that the recreation master plan is still out there to my frustration. But, but once that piece gets delivered, the intent of that is kind of to identify. Within our community where we want to go, where the gaps are, where we want to go, what the solutions are. And so, and I wouldn't want to really make any permanent decisions with what we're gonna do with that site until it's informed from the recreation master plan process. So then, hearing Counselor Flowers' comments. Is, you know, this tend to, I, I think I'd like to approach it as a reasonable, you know, pilot, but whether that's a three-year, a five-year pilot. I, i- is up to, is up to kind of what best fits. But yeah, I wouldn't want to make any permanent decisions with what we're doing to that until we're actually informing it through that broader prioritization and public engagement process. So. It's such a great piece and I don't want us to, to misuse it. My thoughts at this point.
Okay, leaves it to me. I have a question before I add comment. Do we not run summer programs there anymore? I thought years ago. Youth summer camps were run out of there.
The recreation and art summer programming ceased to exist in two thousand and twenty.
Right. It, we just got kind of swiped off the board during the pandemic and hasn't come back? I know, but I forget. I'm not the only person who's forget things. I'm the only person who's admitting it.
I can add some context. It was not just COVID that resulted in that programming discontinuing. It was the removal of. Community services and recreation from the town's organizational structure, which we are in the process of rebuilding.
Interesting. That is quite a topic to have forgotten. Yeah, well, so I, I think it's sad that we don't do that anymore there. So on the, on the, on the, on the comment of where I'd like to go. I'd like to, I'd like just go all in on the community piece. Like, it is such a great facility and like, let's not forget, as kind of Counselor Fadden mentioned, it is the Cochrane Ranch. It is the, is the heart of the history of our entire community and I think it would be a huge mistake to let one single business, even a nice business. Go in there and largely monopolize the entire thing, at least even five days a week. So I'd really like to go in on a, coming up with some big plan and how we can utilize it for the community's purpose, build more park in there if we need to. Reach out to literally every community group and see how they want to use it. Go to the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, Minor Hockey, Boys and Girls Club, the library. I'm sure they could all think, think of ways to use it. So that's where I'm at. Counselor Fedejo?
Yeah, so it's, that's kind of a little bit where I was trying to, trying to think of, of when you're talking community groups and, and usage, I, I agree with that, like putting it out there and. And really having usage groups come to us. Going back in, in, you know, thank you for bringing up two thousand and twenty and, and budgetary decisions. So all of a sudden now go back into that realm where we're gonna hire like a whole new fleet of recreation people to bring in programming. I mean, and the other thing is, is that then we start competing against private business. And other businesses that exist in our community. I, I would rather us take a focus, if we're, if we're talking about community usage, use those nonprofits, use the organizations, use community associations. And really they, we're not creating. A department to be able to provide recreation opportunities where now we're hosting them there, competing against private business. And we really haven't gone to that, those usage groups first. I, like, if, if everybody, every community group says we have no use for this space. Then let's have that conversation, but I'd really hate to create a department which we've already depleted to now create programming. Competing against people who might actually want to use the space. Does that make sense?
I, 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 I'm following what you're saying. I, I certainly am. Where I'm. I'm, I guess where I'm challenged is, is that a lease of the space is a, is a user group creating opportunity of that space. And what I think I'm hearing about the community user groups using that space would create a flow-through. And so that reverts back to, how do we clean the space? How do we manage the space? How do we maintain the space? Who's maintaining the space? And so. That's a, that, that creates challenges that we haven't considered in this process. What has initiated this conversation, bringing this, or at least creating the business case for this discussion, because I know council has wanted to bring this forward. Was there, there are, in the ranch house, businesses being displaced. And so we wanted to at least create the opportunity to have that discussion of how that function would. Revert into the clubhouse or the potential for that discussion for council to, to deliberate over. But the reality of the situation, it's, it's councils will how we approach this and, and I'm, and I'm very happy to consider all of the options. It's just that I don't think that we're getting a greater amount of utilization and a greater amount of revenue generation out of the space by having a rolling number of user groups that would be utilizing this on a hourly. Daily, weekly basis.
I think if I could, just to add, Counselor Fedejo, one of the things that you were saying is exactly what the intention would be behind what a ten-month lease would look like. Is that those types of groups would be the ones that would have the opportunity to put forward a proposal to use the space. And so it would be a community service oriented type of group, whether it's Boys and Girls Club or. Other service providers in the community that have a need for space or want to provide programming such as you're, you're suggesting. And they would be the ones that would enter into that ten-month lease. That's kind of what our vision was, was that there would have that community service element to it without the municipality. Recreating the, or stepping into space that we quite frankly don't have the capacity to step into. And so it would, the intention was to find a way to support and activate the space, support those types of groups. While addressing the fact that this is an underutilized asset in our community and not compounding the cleaning and or the impact to the space, which is what Mr. Ham was suggesting.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm. I'm not completely sold on like it being one usage group that has a ten-month lease. Yet I, I really don't want to see us step back into where we're creating a whole wing of people to create programming that, you know. Three, four years ago, we said we didn't need and now we're recreating the same type of story that we just left, right? So. I, I don't know what the middle ground is there. I, I do know that there is a shortage of, of places for community groups to be able to host and, and if anything, like. Probably one of the biggest centers that we have right now is, is the Cochrane Lions Event Center and even trying to book an event there myself, you really realize like. How far out they're booking and, and some of those dates that are no longer available. So I really do see a shortage of space that we can offer here in the community. From somebody who wants to host an event, somebody that wants to be able to do anything and we really don't have that ability and they're turning out people away. So I just, I, I like the idea of the community benefit. I just don't want to step into a gap or we're reef. Kind of recreating a wing of people and now offering programming as the town. I really, I don't necessarily want to see us go there. kind of recreating a wing of people and now offering programming as the town. I really, I don't necessarily want to see us go there. So if there's some sort of middle space that we can land on, I think that would be uh, that would be the best thing that I would like to see.
Yeah, I I I wouldn't compare the clubhouse square footage quite to an event center. We'd be talking about like five hundred square feet per floor, something. That's a, that's a rough estimation.
Yeah, fair enough, but it's it it is space, right? And when there's sometimes no space, uh, sometimes that's all you have, right? So.
Counselor Flowers.
Just a final comment that we're already rebuilding our community services. We realize we made some mistakes in the past. And I think we're not here to compete, but if there's a need that needs filling, then it's up to us to try to fill it. And I don't think we've ever uh rebounded from stopping all the summer programming. I think there's still a need in the community and we have to figure out what that is and how we can help with it. But I do still see it as a community space and I think the more people that can use it, the better.
Thank you, Counselor Flowers.
Counselor McFadden.
So for clarity, the 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 concept for this of the the ten and two lease option would be to be entering into whoever um entered that agreement would be a multi-year agreement, is what you'd envision? Were you envisioning like a three or five year contract?
We were thinking minimum three year, maximum five year contracts um for the lease. And then the summer programming, we were hoping to uh create a partnership or a relationship with an already existing user group.
Yeah, so I think uh overall I'm comfortable with that approach. I think it brings um some vibrancy and use to the site. But also it gives us time to kind of deliberately determine what our future is in that recreation space. Cause the recreation master plan, I'm not sure where that's bumping down on your priority list. I try to get it up and it goes the other way. But um, the, as soon as that gets done, like once you get the plan, then it takes time to cut the budget to implement the plan. So um I I don't see a conflict between, you know, a a lease for this and being able to then inform the long term use of it with um that research that's going to be determined from that study. Um, and then further, we were started to have a conversation here about um the rebuilding of the community services department. And I think, Council, we need to have a deliberate conversation around that and what our priorities were. Um, and I mean, there's a lot been going on the last couple of years, a lot of transition pieces. Um, but I don't think we've benefited as a community by not having a community services department. Um, and I really feel that uh rebuilding that deliberately identifying what our priorities is, is is a necessary good for our community. It's a necessary service level. Um, and it's not about building competition for our businesses, but uh filling in the gaps where it ju, where, you know, the commercial or the businesses don't compete for those services. So it's, it's really a, I I think it's a conversation we need to have a little bit more deliberately than as an aside to to this project. So just following this, I said, I I think I overall am comfortable with the direction of this. I think it gives us time to be deliberate in our choices. Um, but my focus for the site um always would be the community services, community recreation.
Um, I'd like to way back in the conversation. I just wanted to s- say that I uh I really appreciate the words, revenue generation are being talked about. I appreciate that the town is thinking about making money and easing the burden on taxpayers. But in this instance, I do not care about revenue generation of a few ten, like tens of thousands of dollars, um, in something that is so central and iconic to our community. If it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe I'd say, yeah, let's do it. But it's not a lot of money to do something right in the middle of town. If we're, if we're looking for a community oriented solution that is simple and doesn't require a bunch of complicated operations from the town, I honestly think it would be a pretty good idea to reach out to the library and ask them if they're interested. I have been on the library board for two years and not one month goes by without them harassing me for more space. Um, to my knowledge, there is currently no plan to give them more space, but they keep on asking for it because they need it. I could see them hosting whatever programming they wanted up there, whether it's their adult programming goes up there or something. About they would just take it from our hands and just operate it publicly and anybody could go in and go out. And what I like about that versus a business coming in is a facility, an an arrangement like that would mean any person in Cochrane would have the opportunity to go down there and enjoy that site. It's not just having people go into the ranch house. It's or the the ranch park and the clubhouse. It's, I want everybody in Cochrane to be able to go to our iconic park and be able to do something there and enjoy it. Um, so that's where I'm at. Back over to Mayor Junang.
I like that idea. I do. I don't know what that looks like and what option that is in the in the package. Uh, maybe that is the ten and two. Uh, I don't think it is though. The library would be probably twelve months. Um, I do like that suggestion though. Cause and I was about to say, let's just go back to option one, which is leave it as is until we know what the construction access is like, what the two years is like in front. I mean, I, I don't know. I was gonna ask a question about that, but we don't know the answer. I don't think about what that will look like. Um, so instead of wading into something, let's do nothing. Uh, and but I, what I'm hearing around the table is everybody wants some sort of community use there. That seems to be the prevalent uh conversation. So it's not lease it. So then let's, let's just let's just go away from that. Let's just make it clear. Uh, maybe we leave administration with some of the discussion tonight and you know, I don't even know what it looks like to approach the library. The library pays for space. I mean, we're talking about different, we're talking about a different thing here, but I had never considered that. But I I like that idea.
I could jump, if you don't mind if I jump in, uh, because we are.
I'm not chairing. That that that's uh.
I mind. No, just kidding. Go for it.
We, we have worked with the library, the Boys and Girls Club. Um, we have worked with um some of the community services entities to discuss what the opportunities may be. Daytime usage during school hours was one of the lower utilized spaces, which is why we were looking to opportunistically look for the lease in daytime usage during school time hours, because that would kind of salt, resolve the 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 revenue end of the stream. Whereas weekends would still meet the need of the community to book birthday parties and those types of events. And the library and both BGC are very interested in the daytime usage of the site um during summer programming. And so you can understand that it's hard to put that into uh an agenda package succinctly so that you can understand that we have, we are speaking to these groups, but we don't want to give anyone the wrong impression that that's necessarily where the direction is going. So we, we tried to bring the best possible option based on the information that we gathered with the community user groups, but that's on the basis that any user group can apply to to utilize these spaces. It's not just the ones we've named today.
Has there been any conversation asking the, oh, sorry, are we done? Whoops, I'm the chair though. Um, last time, literally last time I've used chairs. Let me enjoy it. Um, I've been using it now. Um, so ha- has there been, uh, has there been an offer to the library if they could, like, full time usage? Has that been a discussion?
We've had some loose discussion around um what their usage profile would look like.
And did they like the idea?
They liked the idea of the summer month programming because that gives them an opportunity to program two or three possible classes out of that site for full, full day and weekend programming.
But was there a, like, was there a conversations, do you want this thing? You want the keys to it? Run whatever you want in there?
I did, that's not the type of conversation we had, no.
I would like to have that kind of conversation with the library.
Sounds good.
I think based on the feedback that we've received tonight from council, that was what we're looking for, is what council's appetite is on what type of area they would like to enter into with that particular space. Um, with the feedback, we can certainly go back, have some conversations. Um, really look at what groups are interested in taking um on the space from a full time perspective. Um, as, cause that's what I'm hearing. Um, definitely the potential for those to be com- community type groups, whether that's the library or other organizations that uh support community services.
Um, any further comments? Administration? Mr. Ham? And that is it. That is the end of Deputy Mayor's tenure, I think, except for the in camera items. Is there another gen item? Well, they're just in camera items, right? Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you very much to all of you who may have been watching us uh publicly. That is the end. Motion to go on camera. All in favor?